...
N'um djilma pam. N'de bole mbapre loya inu sajule, kabole mbapre loya mumunu jule. Bezana rani loya n'uma kati parliament, part ma da kwa ajilma pam. Kataba yuaba brabo n'amate ba gomnanti pune n'amakabazan lama. Kabo konstituencenem tedi amfa ne, dimia soro. Tepu mala loya konya loya binga, dung paleng paleng ya tukmo dina duma ne. The General Secretary Mamang Jitama, ka flagbe ra Mamang Jitango. Brand tojule wunni idahalbar kapu niye n'denyala yibago tumpaliment. Oisakuna ojita mono kuna, dezo ezele tango kabole loya Abdel Fattah Ojofa. Parliament's candidate for Yendi, for Yenadi constituency.
Azu, azu, azusa. Your Excellency, Your Excellency, Former President John Dramani Mahama, I stand on all existing protocols. Your Excellency, you are most welcome to Yendi constituency. Okay. Your Excellency, gathered before you today are men and women who share in the belief of the NDC. Your Excellency, Yendi constituency for the past years has suffered a lot. Your Excellency, we have brought before you traditional leaders. We have brought before you market men and women. We have brought before you professional bodies, students and artisans. Your Excellency, they all have one cry. And that cry is who is there to save them? We have no doubt that indeed you are the Messiah. Your Excellency, the absence of opportunities for the youth in Yendi is our major problem as a political party, especially when the NDC is in power. Your Excellency, it will interest you to note that since 1992 to date, there has never been anybody from Yendi serving in an NDC administration, never. And that is a serious worry to us. As a result of that fact, we have not had enough opportunities for the young and timid youth of the constituency. Dimia soro mabe, zo matena la zosong. May His Excellency John Dramani Mahama tepuni. De zosong mahami, di empali. Your Excellency, the last time NDC won the Yendi seat was in 2008. Interestingly, leading up to 2008, NTP had held the seat for 12 years. And it was on the 12 year of NDC leading Yendi, that NTP leading Yendi, that NDC won the seat. Coincidentally, after NDC won the seat in 2008, we left it again in 2012. And NTP took over and has held it again for 12 years. So it looks like the time has come for history to repeat itself. Dimia soro, sa shalina ya NDC n'ijokoma, ndinyaya Panama. Ten daya Yendi koma 2008, NTP na gubbe, yu pinayi. Yu pinayi ma nyaga kati dere koma katiwa. Kabla lama, ndi alandee, la no yu pinayi, yu pinayi ma sa kati ya Panama. De zo katsoya yela, neti divyuni ya Panama. However, tedi ma yagila, temama tiya puti effort shale. De zo dimia soro, tya yagati tya chef kambati nyaga. His Excellency John Dramani Mahama, only a president, kati kamebo parliament, dimia nyetum goshelma fe yela. So ten daya Excellency John Dramani Mahama, flag staffa ma, ten damo omino tmo, loya Jofa, kati kati san damo n'mana, kati zadi. Nambe azu, nambe.
To tpa ya, tpa ya. Parliament's candidate for Yendi, loya Abdel Fattah Ojofa, o filaka tuma. Pumpono kanere yelma, onkwa sinango. Nirba yin Yendi filaka tina kujima ama koi kara kana. Engala n'ubole, di djilma n'ani MP. Korani minister, nde po yeyi vote loya Fattah Ochon. NDC buter loya n'um djilma pam. Obazani la loya binga, ko konstituencenem dati ko chon. Ka NDC dinam, yung balangma saha kaboto kama lepo ny'ar minister. Ezele tango kabole minority leader kro, ne MP insanti, tamale sa konstituencie. Kati bondo sawa lenmamira, loya Haruna Idresu.
Azu, azu. The Chairman of the Council of Elders, Excellency John Dramani Mahama, Regional Chairman and Secretary Alajuhud Weyaya, my colleague members of parliament, and sheriff, my good friend who has come to see how the Yanastit is state. Azu. La benya la sangma ngo. Mamenda yele ya, n'uno ite po koble, kaba kardulu. Bama kaso lo no be maro koble. Azu. Akubado mala ya, azu. Azu. Akubado mala, tanganda abiane ya. Kapame yinte po re pa kuyakunaya. Onkutsho tene ya pa kulo, pormo kuna. Bate kune na kani kurgayala, n'ere katala, n'ebel lamsi pa kuyama. En lamsi pa kuyala, kina ba shelma mbara. De zo e lamsi, Excellency John Dramani Mahama. Mister, Mister President and President of the fourth Republic, I intend to speak on one, two major items. When I hear the NPP say that Baumia is experience. So those of you who know English well, comparison of experience. John Mahama, experienced Vice President. John Mahama, experienced President. Somebody has a less of it. Somebody has a less of it. And somebody has a combination of having been in government and will benefit from the opportunity of hindsight. And that is John Dramani Mahama. Azu. When I hear the NPP say that Baumia is leading a digital revolution. Probably they don't even know how a revolution starts. To quote Alajuhud Weyaya, it's not to make your table nice. This is a spoon, this is some catlars or no. The foundation of a digital Ghana was led by the NDC and led by Edward Salia and subsequently succeeded by John Dramani Mahama. Then subsequently before you had the like of Candapa Michael Kue Haruna Idresu. So if you want how digitalization started in Ghana, check your history and check the records well. It began under John Mahama when he hived telecoms from postal, remember? Go back to history. He had to hive the postal sector from the telecom sector. That is why you people started to say, me jina abantina me kasa. You remember, that was the beginning of the digital revolution. The introduction of mobile telephony into our country. So today when you hear digitalization, Dr. Baumia, are you doing that man or smartphones? If there was no mobile telephony of MTN on the GSM platform, would there be digitalization? Somebody somewhere had to start the digital revolution. Indeed, President Mahama and the NDC, Inya Solongo, Ankuba Ho, Hainu Kulungugu. Under President Mahama, there was a Norwegian funding of 28 million euro to lay fiber from Ho to Kulungugu. Go and check the records and check from the embassies. So when you say you want to be digital, you need to build infrastructure. The infrastructure, some, to be fair to them, commenced under Kufua, but built upon John Dramani Mahama. So after infrastructure, in fact, what the NPP did right, I'll give them one credit, was legislation to pass the laws, reforms. But after reforms were the laws. Now when Baumia says that digitalization, hear him well, I'm not sure he himself even understands digitalization. The NDC concept of digitalization and John Mahama's concept of digitalization, listen, is simply to mainstream ICT in all aspects of our national life, full stop. That is why John Mahama is talking about, where he says, I want to introduce digitalization into the public sector. So that when you commit a crime, today, people are still doing mobile theft, mobile money transfer theft. Where there is proper digitalization, it should be easy to arrest them. Because that Ghana card coincides with your what? Your ID card together with your mobile number in order that anonymity is eliminated. We are not there yet, so Dr. Baumia, be fair and appreciate that somebody somewhere laid the foundation for a digital Ghana. In fact, the NDC launches more mobile telephony companies than any administration under his watch as Vice President and then President of the Republic. My final message, the General Secretary of the Party is here. President Mahama is making one important promise to Ghanaians that he will undertake major constitutional and administrative reforms that cure the stability of our democracy and the stability of our economy. So not just constitutional review, some will be administrative reviews. He will lead and provide leadership and providing that. Then katina okunadagba. Ah, songun ta pa. Kehe na tete, za pa wa na drop ya, kehe nuto chafo nyoo, ana mi wumla. Manta pa ho, kehe za pa wa na try, kana n'ungutapshimane za chafo nyoo. It was under my colleague honourably Inu Sappuseni that in cabinet, under President Mahama, the concept of an eastern corridor route was conceptualized, even under President Mills. It was conceptualized, thought through, initiated and acted upon. That is why you have those Brazilian companies come and do the road here. Ma mpadu algu shaon. Agobanu so ma leka duel ma. To lenya swashel John Mahama, nda amerika rokungu sha ma. N'eben chalatene n'tebo tebo shel kun tamale ma, lenya swema, iben yarle. Azu. Azu. The party ma takai is to form majority in parliament. Dezo tuzo, loya Jofa. Palayu ala kawle, yeyi yina shamwa, da yimna la la police station n'uma. Ette John Mahama zu, loya Jofa za, la la.
To tpa ya, tpa ya, loya Haruna Idresu. Eh, pumpono, benganu bole shama, tukwen bole la bi yuaya, yuaya ma zo ya. Kalavse ji ma tene yana, yeyi yana ge, kati mbanzola m'kuro na yina, nde ng'jang omalsheti. Your Excellency, I want to take permission from you and acknowledge identifiable groups that are invited to the hall here. Then from there, they will give you their brief testimonies before you climax the meeting. To dimia soro, bambe jingoma apu n'uma. Temala, hairdressers association, bebe tango. Tailers association, kabi be tango. Welders association, kabi be tango. Motorcycle operators association, kabi be tango. Nurses association, kabi be tango. Nurses association, kabi be tango. Kati male kente wevers, the smoke wevers association, bezaha be tango. Kamai television repairers association, bamada TV n'uma, beda association ma, bebazaha be tango. Kati male electrical installations, beda association, kabi be tango. Kamai nurses association, kamai vehicle status, beda association ma, kabi be tango. Ka phone repairers association, kabi be tango. Kana je local kente wevers association, bezaha lamji wama apu n'uma. To pumpono, tyan chamka, yina yimba yimba. N'dezang yeye twani yashale insanti. Tuli, tiborme neti ya blacksmith association, epune n'um bro yuno, Mr. Bashiru. Abay yo mani yina tango. Mr. Bashiru, Blacksmith Association, machel n'umbala ma. Machel n'umbala ma, ki yina. Ay kana jojo zaunakpa. Zaunakpa, dia dia, minte yine, minte yine kamai, dim soro, minte yine. Minte yine, chaani.
Salaam alaikum. Eh, teno so tuya lepam. Beti yezam shemya, tenzam eti association n'uma za n'angbayene. Gomme saha kane. To adembian mani yala, teno machel n'um tenzam eti n'ya association n'uma za, ankashabaza. Bezana kati yenzani. Tuli, eh, on behalf of, on behalf of the Yendi artisans, skilled workers, we welcome you, Your Excellency, the incoming President of the Republic of Ghana in coming 2025, inshallah. We are welcoming you to Yendi. We, the artisans, are working seriously to ensure that victory is yours coming 2025, inshallah. And, and that when you are sworn in, when you are sworn in as the next president, we are, we, the Yendi artisans, are appealing to you, Your Excellency, to promote the skilled workers of Ghana, the skilled workers of Ghana and mostly especially Yendi. And we are welcoming you as the next President of Ghana, the Republic of Ghana. Thank you. Eh, debolista banle.
To tpa ya, tpa ya. To tpa ya, tpa ya. Pumpono, tiam bolela eh, mbapu bole wumbe, chief of Bumbona yele. Ko yina artisan omalshel pa, chief of Bumbona yele. Chief of Bumbona yele, ubole wumbe, Dawuné. Chief Amara.
The former President John Mahama, all party executives gathered, all protocols observed. I stand on behalf of Konkomba chiefs to bring forth some of the myriad of problems that we pray in first, that you win the election and come back as our president. And all our people are solidly behind you, praying that that dream is realized. First and foremost, it is said that education is the key. And in this occurring dispensation, whether it is a political party representation, it is based on education. Jobs, it is based on education. Our communities has reached the stage where we even require tertiary schools. However, if you go to our communities, we don't even have secondary schools. So we are pleading that when you come into power, first, our basic schools, they are nothing to write home about. Secondary schools, and of course, we require tertiary schools too. Number two, our governance has the rare measure of tradition, that is traditional chiefs being incorporated in the governance of our country. We are asking that chiefs are empowered to be able to rule and help our nation grow. We are looking for transformation within our community, especially along the eastern corridor of the country. There is great opportunity here. However, we need to first empower the chiefs and also empower everybody related to chiefancy to be able to realize that. We, so many governments have come into power. However, we see that in some cases, cars are given to chiefs, but in Konkamba communities, not even bicycles. So we are asking the president that when you come into power, we require that our chiefs are giving the opportunity to serve by empowering them, building their capacity to help grow our country. Number three is jobs. And with jobs, it is for the youth. We, we are praying that, one, we should be able to incubate a hub or have a hub that incubates entrepreneurs, especially those who have completed school. So that a lot of jobs are created from the grassroots. We want a lot of our people to be empowered to sustain the growth of our economy. That is the way to go. We are also asking that micro, eh, eh, what do you call it? Microindustries eh, from eh, share butter producers, eh, soap makers, dress makers and all that. We expect that to also grow. And then lastly, Bumbona is now poised to have a district so that central government administration would come into our communities and help us grow at a very fast rate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Chief Ubole Wumbe, Your Excellency, it will interest you to note chief base relations with one of Africa's most celebrated reggae ambassadors, Rocky Dawuné. Rocky Dawuné is from Bumbona yele and that's the chief from that community. Thank you very much, chief. Eh, pumpono, only two people kati klo se, ko omama nankana. Tiam bolela, Teyin, Teyin representative. Kamna tenu one minute, then kani sismar representative. Bazha kana, dimi yala one person to represent both nurses and Teyin, then we are grateful for that. Thank you. A representative is coming to give a speech on behalf of both Teyin and Nations Students Association. Thank you for making it eh, simple. Thank you.
Azu, azu. Thank you so much. Your Excellency, the incoming President of the Republic, His Excellency John Dramani Mahama, the incoming MP for Yeni constituency, loya Abdel Fattah Ojofa, the constituency chairman, the constituency secretary, the regional executives, other dignitary presidents here. We welcome you and thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. I stand here before as the tenth president of our college to express my heartfelt appreciation and administration for our vibrant presidential candidate and the incoming President of the Republic of Ghana, coming 7th December 2024. It is singular honor done me. It is a singular honor done me to speak directly into the hearing of the incoming president, His Excellency John Dramani Mahama. It fills me with pride to see the exceptional work done under your leadership, particularly in addressing the pressing issues facing our nurses. However, as we comment, however, as we comment your achievement, we must also recognize the pressing issue that have been neglected by the incumbent government and urge you to prioritize addressing them promptly in your next administration. Firstly, since we don't have time, going to wrap it. Firstly, the non-payment of nurses allowance is an issue that cannot be overlooked. It does not only create financial hardship for those affected individuals, but also hinders their ability to pursue education or engage in professional activities effectively. We cannot ignore the fact that many students depend, many students on these allowances, depend on these allowances to cover their basic needs such as accommodation, textbooks and other living expenses. Moreover, Your Excellency, the prompt posting of certified nurses is crucial to ensure, to ensure the provision, to ensure the provision of quality healthcare service to our communities. As we all know, nurses plays a vital role in healthcare system, providing care and support in patients in our hospitals. However, the delay in posting certified nurses by the incumbent government has resulted in a shortage of healthcare professionals in many of our hospitals and clinics across the country. This has not only put a strain in the existing nursing staff, but also compromise the healthcare provided to our patient. Finally, the burden of high school fees on training nurses is a matter that requires urgent attention. We believe that education should be accessible to all regardless of their financial background. Training nurses, who are the future of our healthcare system, should not only be burdened with the exorbitant fees that hinder their educational journey. In conclusion, Your Excellency, I applaud your incoming, I applaud you, I applaud, I applaud our incoming president for this outstanding work and dedication in addressing these critical issues. However, we must not, we must not stop here. It is, it is our responsibility to urge you to promptly address the delay in posting certified nurses and the need to reduce the excessive school fees paid by all training nurses. Your commitment to these crucial issues reflects your understanding of the challenges faced by our healthcare professionals and your vision for a more equitable healthcare system. Together, let us work towards a brighter future for our healthcare system. Long live Ghana, long live our great party, long live us all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Teyin, thank you. The very last one, Bawa Bashiru. Please quickly, Bawa, one minute, just do the summary of your point, professional nurses.
Azu. Your Excellency, the incoming President of the Republic of Ghana, my able incoming Member of Parliament for Yendi constituency. I stand on behalf of the democratic health professional to make an appeal to the incoming president that the plight of the health professional today has worsened. And we are making an appeal to him to look at certain factors that we are to mention. So that when he comes to power, he will be able to address those concerns. The cost of education, federal of education for nurses has become so expensive. And we are begging our daddy to consider providing scholarship for dedicated members of their profession. We also want to make an appeal again. The promotion of health professionals have been clouded with so much corruption and punishment and impediment. We are begging President, President Mahama to make the promotion of health professionals automatic so that those corrupt activities can be looked at. I also want to make an appeal again that the condition and cost that the condition and cost of living of the health professionals has worsened and we've, and, and we are appealing to the president that there used to exist a tax waiver on vehicle for nurses and health professionals. We are telling President Mahama to have a look at that. We also want to beg President Mahama and his incoming government to also make provision for appointment of health professional so that we, the young one, can also look up to him and will be enthused. I am also making my last appeal to President Mahama that eh we would like him to eradicate the national service eh for junior rank staff who have been in the system, but due to promotion and upgradement, they are still make to do national service. Example is the community health nurses and the enrolled nurses. We are begging President Mahama to have a look at that and eliminate the national service for enrolled nurses and junior rank nurses. And our last appeal is that the cost of medicals has become so bad in Ghana and we will beg for a cover from President Mahama and his government to have a medical scheme or medical insurance for health workers in Ghana. Thank you so much.
So, thank you, Mr. Bawa, thank you. At this point, having listened to concerns from various identifiable groups present here in the hall, we are inviting His Excellency, the incoming president of the Republic of Ghana, John Dramani Mahama, to come to the podium and make his speech. May we give him a standing ovation as he mounts the podium. Please give him a round of applause.
Thank you, thank you, please be seated. Thank you very much. Um, I'm very happy to be with you this afternoon for this town hall meeting. Um, as you've already been told, it is the building Ghana tour. Tuma tuntumde ngo, danyala building Ghana tour. Tegel tse tse yankile Ghana za, kaman taman eh bantum tumaza, man students, man eh nurses, so kam enjene entoxe, ka tsubang Bumbore naontetetan nasara, tse yannengshem entebak. So, the first one who spoke was from metal workers and he spoke on behalf of all people who work with metal. We've met some of your colleagues in other places, steel benders and all of them and they've put their case before us. Who do Macheli, Macheli knew? And so, we have captured all the concerns that they have put and we have it on the laptop. The lady at the back there has a laptop, so she's captured all, all of it. I also want to thank Chief Oborwumbe of Bumbonaile for his very exciting contribution. Um, he spoke about education, especially secondary and basic education and also tertiary. There's a lot that is wrong with our secondary and basic education. They introduced a new curriculum for the basic schools about four years ago and up to now, there are no textbooks for the basic schools to even use. And so, that is part of the problem. Apart from that, this government has not been eliminating schools under trees and so we continue to have a lot of schools that are in very poor condition. When NDC was there, anywhere there were schools under trees and children were not learning in very good conditions, we came and built a new classroom block for them. What we're going to do now is for any new schools that we build, we'll prioritize teacher accommodation. Because one of the reasons why teachers don't want to stay is because they don't have accommodation. Sometimes they go to a village, there's no accommodation to even rent. So he has to stay in Yendi and transport himself every day to the school. And so, any new school that we build will come with enough accommodation for teachers. And the schools that exist, we are going to prioritize adding accommodation to the existing schools so that at least the head teacher and a few of the teachers can get a place to stay and be able to teach their children. The free SHS is also an issue. We want to make it better. And so I've said that in order to improve the quality of their feeding, we're going to take the feeding from the centralized national food buffer stock and we're going to give it to the headmasters to make sure that they feed their children. So, we will pay the feeding grants to the headmasters, to the schools and the headmasters will be responsible for procuring the food for the children. We'll just make sure that they follow the guidelines because the guidelines are that you must buy food produced in Ghana. And so if it's rice, you must buy local made in Ghana rice. If it's chicken, you must buy locally processed chicken so that our farmers too can benefit from the school feeding. Um, with regard to tertiary education, we try to make sure that we spread it in such a way that every area has some tertiary education. It includes nursing training schools, it includes colleges of education, it includes technical institutes, universities, it includes universities and so on and so forth. And so when we come, we'll look at the map again. We make sure that there is a tertiary institution within reach of a number of traditional areas or a number of districts. And so that's something that we'll look at, eh, chief. Then he also talked about empowering chiefs um in order that they are able to perform their traditional functions. We have made that part of the responsibility of the district assemblies so that they empower their local traditional chiefs to be able to carry out their responsibility. We're also going to allow chiefs to have a representative on the assembly so that 10% appointed members of the assembly will allow the chief to have a representative amongst the appointed members on the assembly. Then the next problem is jobs, jobs, jobs. Youth unemployment is a major threat to this country. When we were in office, the total unemployment figure was 8%. Today it has doubled to 14%. So 14% of our young people come out of school and they can't find jobs. And so the next NDC government was known for infrastructure. We did a lot in infrastructure. We're going to continue infrastructure, but this time we're going to turn our attention to, to livelihoods and entrepreneurship so that young people can set up their own businesses and also employ others to work for them. Because the public sector is not a sector that can absorb everybody. Because if you look at our population, we're a population of 30 million people in Ghana. The current number of people employed in the public sector, nurses, teachers, doctors, soldiers, police officers, watchmen, security people, everybody, the total number of people employed in the public service is 700,000 out of 30 million. So it means that government must work so that we create more employment in the private sector. And so that's where we're going to put a lot of investment so that we can bring factories here to process share butter, to process cotton, to process textiles and a lot of other things, to process granite oil, to process all kinds of vegetable cooking oils so that our young people can also get work to do. We had what we call the Youth Enterprise Support Initiative. We're going to reintroduce it. It was an initiative that was meant, it was an initiative that was meant to teach young people how to set up their own businesses. We must not all leave school and expect that we should be employed by government or by somebody. We also can become self-employed. We can help ourselves to become better and be able to employ others. When we started the Youth Enterprise Support Initiative, 6,000 young people applied and out of that, we selected the fairest face of them, almost a thousand of them. And what we do is you write a feasibility study, you show the business you want to engage in. We come, we inspect the site where the business should be and then we give you the support to do that business. Most of the time, it is equipment, we'll buy the equipment for you and we'll give you a little capital to start and we'll be coming to see how you are doing and advising you so that you know how to run the business. And some of those that we set up are still in good business. There was a lady who left University of Science and Technology and she said she wanted to do aquaculture. And so we helped her with cages and she put them on the Volta Lake. We helped her with the seed, eh, the fingerlings, we gave her the feed and she was producing tilapia, she had a cold van, she was supplying all the restaurants in town with tilapia and she made a lot of money. She employed 20 people. So instead of becoming an employee, she became an employer and she employed 20 people, created 20 jobs. So those are the kinds of things that we can do. Um, we will finance the Youth Enterprise Support Initiative out of the Ghana Exim. We set up the Ghana Exim Bank. When this government came, they just dissipated and giving it mostly to eh people they know, political party chairman and others. We are going to stop that and make sure that the money goes to Ghanaians who can utilize it to create jobs for our young people instead of political party apparatchik. Tien talked about alawa, that the alawa is not coming. In 2016, I told you that we're going to invest in building more chief compounds for you, more hospitals for you so that we can expand the opportunities for more people to be employed. We're building new community day schools and so I suggested that we're going to substitute the alawa with student loan scheme. And unfortunately, eh, our opponents said, no, they can pay the allowance. And so, eh, I know a lot of you voted against us because we said we're substituting with, with the student loan scheme. But the reality is that we've upgraded most of your institutions to tertiary institutions. And so for equity sake, we said, let's put all our students on student loan. We'll give you the loan, you pay your school fees and then you only pay when you get a job. If you leave school and you don't have a job, nobody will come and ask you to pay the student loan. But when we employ you and you get a job, then we'll start deducting it bit by bit from your salary so that it goes back into the student loan scheme so that your younger sister who is following you can also get it to be able to pay her fees. That is a more sustainable way. And that's why we said we're going to substitute it so that we'll use the alawa to build more hospitals, more chief compounds, finish the community day schools so that when you come out, your posting will be automatic because the classrooms will be there, we need the teachers to go and teach. And so we'll look at it when we come. Eh, posting, we've talked especially for the eh, teachers and nurses. For the teachers, we've said we'll take away licensure exams. So, your licensing, your licensing as teachers will be part of your final year academic work so that when you come out, you don't have to take another exam to become teachers. And then also, once we introduce the student loan scheme, we'll take away the quotas so that we're able to bring more students into your schools. Right now, because they have reintroduced the allowance which does not even come, they restrict the number of people who can come into the school because they cannot pay the allowance. But I'll appeal on your behalf. And so, I'm talking to President Akufadu and Vice President Baumia that the students that you promised the allowance are sitting here with me in Yendi and they are asking you to come and pay their allowances. That they haven't received the allowances, maybe you've forgotten. They said I should remind you that they are waiting for their allowances. So please pay them. Um, vehicle waivers. The vehicle waivers, we're going to sit with your executives again, your leadership and then see how we can police it. The vehicle waivers were taken away because some unscrupulous people, instead of buying the vehicle for themselves, they were conniving with car dealers and then they import the vehicle in their name. But then they take some money from the car dealer and the car dealer sells the car commercially. And so we're not achieving the purpose for which we are giving the vehicle waiver. So we're going to sit, if we can get a system where any car imported under the vehicle waiver is used exactly by the person is supposed to benefit, then we'll be able to reintroduce it. We brought the vehicle waiver because sometimes nurses and doctors and others have to be called in the night to go on emergency. You don't expect them to come and stand by the roadside and be looking for Okada or Mahama can do to be able to go to work. And so if we're able to safeguard it so that they don't eh, that thing that happened where they were selling the cars to car dealers is stopped, if we're able to do that, I don't have any problem with us introducing the vehicle waiver. Then eh, medical insurance. I do think that eh, medical workers who are working should be insured because you get in touch with patients who have all kinds of diseases, you also can get sick and even die. Many medical personnel have lost their lives because of the nature of their eh job. And so, it's a good suggestion, we have put it in there. And then also abolition of national eh service for teachers and medical personnel. We've also captured that so that we will go and rationalize it. So these are the main items that you eh talked about. GES, we will strengthen GES and shake it up so that it does the work that it's supposed to do in order to improve our educational system. And we will allow teachers and headmasters to talk freely. Right now, they are oppressed. If you're a headmaster and you say anything critical about the educational policy, they will either sack you or they'll transfer you. Our children have no textbooks, no headmaster can talk. I can talk because they can't do anything to me. But the headteachers and the teachers are all afraid to talk because this is a very oppressive government, very unforgiving, intolerant. You must not criticize them. And so I say that the Independence Day for headmasters and teachers and all those who know what is wrong but cannot talk, the second Independence Day apart from Ghana's Independence Day is coming for them on 7th January 2025. They will be free to talk because we, you need criticism in order to improve a system. If things are not going well and you say people should shut up, then you can never get it right. And so and us, they would, who, this Jack Toronto. You mean Jack Toronto is oppressing the headmasters? I didn't say it all. And so, they must be free to talk so that you know what is going wrong and then you can.